Not yet.
I'll wait.
Good evening, at 6:00 PM, May 24th, 2017. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local Mashpee TV. Next, if we could all rise, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sitting on tonight's first hearing, it's actually our first continued hearing, will be our five regular board members. So, Jim, would you read the first continued hearing?
During the hearing on 41 Greenwood Road, owner Eleanor J. Harris requests a variance to allow for a shed to be placed less than one foot from the rear and side yard setback under 174-31 of the zoning bylaws on property located in R3 zoning district and Pompanesett Overlay District, MAP 117, parcel 312, Mashpee, Mass. This hearing is being continued from May 10th, 2017, at the request of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I need to step down from this hearing.
Okay. Well, it's gotta be the five regular board members anyway.
You shouldn't sit up here, though.
Yeah, so you can sit right in the audience. Do we have anybody from Greenwood Road? And just for the record, your name and address.
Ellen Harris.
Mark Toomey. Great. Hi.
We're revisiting the location of the proposed shed, as requested. We moved it, if you notice in the, if you have in front of you, the current revision. It's three foot, now three foot from the boundary. It's originally one foot, it is now three foot from the boundary it would be, and also six feet from the house, in the crosshatched area on the six-by-eight-foot shed proposed. Seventeen foot from the boundary on Greenwood Road itself. Requesting approval based on those current dimensions.
Well, if I do recall, you were here, what, two, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, maybe?
Almost.
And we came to an agreement on this, that because of the size of the lot, and I think you're backing up to another shed?
Yep. It will be aligned with the neighbor's shed, back-to-back, but he's three feet from his boundary, where it's been for many, many years, and we will be three feet back from the said boundary on our side.
And I think that's what we were looking for, correct?
And it's still six feet from the house. Actually, seventeen.
I think you were concerned about the generator, the space between, but it looks like there's plenty of space there now.
There's plenty of space, right. I measured it all out. My wife has an angina, and the pollen's getting to me, so.
I can understand that.
Yeah, so, I hope the answer, oh, let me ask you a question, if I may?
Sure.
In order to locate the shrub where you've got it depicted, do you have to take any trees or shrubbery down, or is it just like a grass?
No, no, right now, they excavated the foundation.
Glad to hear that.
And the big oak trees, they're actually on the field.
So you don't have to remove shrub trees, shrubbery?
I don't think landscaping's been done yet.
No, no, but Conservation says that, yeah. That's perfect.
Ron, would you read the comments from Conservation?
Wasn't happy to, so, where is the actual Board of Health? Conservation comment, 41 Greenwood Road, property is located within the flood zone A. However, if the shed is being placed in an area that does not require removal of native vegetation, trees, and shrubs, then a permanent application to Concom is not needed. Good answer.
Do we have any other comments?
There was a Board of Health comment.
There is.
Do you have it?
Yes.
Go for it.
41 Greenwood Road, Board of Health comments, shed location is not near the septic system, no comment required.
No other departments.
Anybody on the board have any more comments, questions, concerns? Anybody in the audience have any comments, questions, concerns?
What are we varying?
If not, Ron, would you like to make a motion?
I just wanna make sure that that motion will be correct, Mr. Chairman.
Two foot from the.
Two foot from rear yard, is that correct?
Three.
Three feet, I mean, it's supposed to be five.
Supposed to be five, well, it is three, so we're gonna vary it by two. Thus, okay.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we issue a variance in the amount of two feet from the rear yard.
Hold on one sec.
Do you wanna specify that it's gonna be the, you know, the northeast corner of the property, that way they know where it's being placed.
He's in Greenwood Road.
You know what I'm saying?
Our Greenwood Road.
It's a side yard setback, isn't it? Not a rear setback.
Oh, still five feet.
Yeah, we're also gonna enter this in inside.
It is side yard.
Right. So it would be in the northwest. West?
Northeast.
Northeast. Northwest, so here's north, there's northwest, right? So it's northwest lot line.
I would think northeast.
Northeast.
But that's north.
There's. I know north is north. This is south. This is east. Is that the east corner? So, there it is, so that's northwest, isn't it? No, the gentleman said east. I'll say whichever one, whichever one I wanna say. I say it's a northwest lot line, but you know what? If you want me to say northeast, you're the chairman.
I'm gonna send you back to the Boy Scouts.
I will. Do you concur with that, Rose?
Go for it.
All right, so what would you like me to call it, Mr. Chairman? Northeast? Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we issue a variance in the amount of two feet on the northeast lot line, again, the amount of two feet. Thus, the required setback is five feet, and you're giving us, or showing us on a plan, three feet. I'd like to issue the motion, give the variance to Eleanor J. Harris of 41 Greenwood Road, and that motion is to allow for the construction of a shed to be placed less than five feet from the rear side yard setback under 174-31 of the zoning bylaws on property located in R3 zoning district and Pompanesett Overlay District, MAP 117, parcel 312, Mashpee, Mass. In issuing the motion, the board finds that it meets all the conditions of Mass General Law's 48, Section 10. I'd like to make reference to a plot plan, proposed shed prepared for Eleanor Harris, 41 Greenwood Road, Mashpee, Mass, prepared by BSS Design Engineering Survey Scale 1 Inch = 20 dated May 19, 2017, drawn EJP, check TB, job number 15197, drawing number P23-97. Revision changed and added offsets to proposed shed, May 23rd, 2017, EJP. And I'd like to make reference to the fact that the Conservation Commission does not have any issues with this because the applicant has told us that they're not gonna be removing any vegetation in locating the shed at its proposed location.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
North, look at it, look at it. Northwest. You see it's still on that.
But you're coming out that right corner.
And he has a vote. No, but the variance is right. Not there. It's here, from this lot line to there, so that's the northwest. It's not from this side.
Scott, I don't see anybody from.
But I, listen.
I seem to know if you're aware.
I never use them.
I don't know if you're aware they're coming. They're doing something.
It's the 24th, isn't it?
I talked to, about three months ago by watching her palace, she gave me some penny, you know, she's always doing with Penny Annie.
Did you bring a compass on this phone?
I didn't see a chart book. Ten to four?
I know.
Go ahead.
You good? Always fingers back. Oh, they're done.
See you in a couple hours.
You got everything coming back? All signed?
She has it.
Oh, perfect. All right, Jim, would you read the first new hearing?
Opening the hearing of 44 Pompanesett Island Road. Owner Adam J. Decter requests a special permit under 174-25 (I), parentheses, non-parentheses, of the zoning bylaws to construct and maintain a dock complex which extends across a total of more than 70 feet of coastal wetland resource areas on property located in R3 zoning district, MAP 106, parcel 23, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
All right, sitting on this hearing will be Jim, to join the other four zoning board members. Scott is stepping down on this one.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is the Board of Health, Attorney Kevin Corain, representing Adam Decter, the owner of the premises situated at 44 Pompanesett Island Road. Something straightforward request. As the board knows, as a general rule, accessory docks are allowed as a matter of right. However, in the event those docks are to extend more than 70 feet over coastal resource areas, there is requirement that the applicant come before the zoning board of appeals and get a special permit to extend more than that 70 feet over coastal resource areas. In this particular case, as you can see on the plans that have been provided, the total complex will extend from the coastal bank to the end of the float that is proposed, about 215 feet. That is relative purpose, making sure that there is sufficient depth for purposes of docking a boat adjacent to the proposed float. The bylaw is pretty clear and straightforward, as long as the proposed dock is adversely impacting wetland resource areas and not interfering with travel by land or by vessel, then the board of appeals has the discretion to act favorably upon the particular request. I would point out that this particular dock complex has been approved by the Conservation Commission and all conditions have been, and a license has been granted by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. I suggest to the board that the approval by the Conservation Commission and by the EJP is additional evidence of the fact that what we're proposing here is not adversely impacting wetland resource areas and not interfering with travel on the shoreline. Our, in the, proposed dock and boat will terminate. I believe the board may have received comments from both the, excuse me, Conservation Commission Shelter Group and Harbor Master. I believe those comments are supportive of the request, and we would respectfully ask the board to grant the special permit that has been applied.
All right, before we read the comments, and anybody have any questions on the board? Comments?
No.
Okay. We read the Harbor Master, and it's an email dated Wednesday, May 24th, reference 44 Pompanesett Island Road Dock Complex, from the Harbor Master. "Hi, Mary Ann, do not have any issues with the 44 Pompanesett Island Dock, thank you. Alex J. Turner." That's from the Harbor Master. Okay, from the Shellfish Constable, Richard York, also dated Wednesday, the 24th, that's today, and it's in reference to the same thing. And the email says, "Mary Ann, the Dexter Dock at 44 Pompanesett Island Road, as shown on the plan, dated 11/19/16 would not be a problem for Shellfish." And it's from Richard York, the Shellfish Constable. We also have comments from the Board of Health, which says, "No comment." And this is from inspections. Excuse me.
That's the agenda.
Oh, it's from Concom.
Concom.
All right, so, from Conservation, 44 Pompanesett Island Road, project approved by Concom, no issues. And from the inspections Department. Okay, 44 Pompanesett Island Road, the area is zoned R3 and is in the Pompanesett Overlay District. This property is also within the pre-contact archaeologically sensitive area listed as moderate. The applicant is seeking a special permit under 174-25-I9, regarding the construction of a dock, pier, ramp, and float extending more than 70 feet of coastal beach, coastal bank, salt marsh, or bordering vegetated wetland. So that is the comment. Anything else that I might have missed? Oh, same thing.
That's it.
Okay. No questions or comments regarding this? Anybody in the audience have questions or comments? Come right up.
My name is David J.
You have to come up here and have the mic, please.
And name and address, if you would.
My name is David J. I'm the abbot to the property in question. I have absolutely no comment or no dispute at all about what's gonna be constructed. I only ask this board if there would be a problem if I go forward and I build a dock in the near future. I have been permitted by.
If I can just interject for a second, today, we're just listening to this application. You would have to follow every guideline in every submittal application or any other application that this person has applied for. As you can see, we're kinda the end of the road, so you've got a process to follow.
But the only question I have is if there'd be a conflict. I've already got the permitting in place. I've already been approved. I just wanna know if suddenly, in the middle of the night, something happens and they say, "Ah, sorry, you can't build."
Rules could change tomorrow at 8:30 in the morning, as far as I'm concerned. There's no guarantee, as one member of this board, that I could make to you. I don't think anyone else is gonna give me a guarantee, just when the time comes when you're prepared to make an application, make an application. Whatever the rules are at that time, we will oversee them.
We can only comment on the stuff on the agenda.
Okay.
You agree with that, Bill?
Absolutely.
Well, that's the law. Yeah.
So I can't even answer your question.
Okay.
You just need to make an application.
Yeah, I mean. I've got an application, and I've already been approved for a dock. All I'm going to ask again is, would there be a conflict if I construct mine after construction begins with my next-door neighbor? If suddenly, you know, I just heard what you said, it could change tomorrow morning, but I've already been approved, I've already got the permits in place, I just haven't begun construction. My only question to you is, would there be a problem?
You have to come to this board.
So you just said that you've got approvals, you haven't begun construction. I don't believe this board has approved your application.
Yeah, I have it all back at home, but yes, the answer was back in December of 2000. I could be wrong. 15, it was already approved.
I would recommend, the zoning officer is sitting on this board, you probably wanna go meet with him to make sure that everything you have.
The clock ticks. Once you get the approval, doesn't mean it's good forever. You know, there's a timeframe.
For what, two years?
Two years.
I would recommend sitting down with that gentleman right there, and making sure that you have what you think you have, and minimally, and maybe hire an attorney to get his opinion as to what you've got, is legal or not.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience?
Love to. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a special permit to Adam J. Decter of 44 Pompanesett Island Road, in reference, under Section 174-25-I, parentheses, nine, of the zoning bylaws, to construct and maintain a dock complex which extends across a total of more than 70 feet of coastal wetland resource area on property located in R3 zoning district, MAP 106, parcel 23, Mashpee, Mass. In issuing this motion, I find, or I'm of the opinion, that it meets all the conditions under Mass General Law 48, Section 9, and I make reference to the following plans. Site plan, proposed pier design plan to accompany notice of intent application prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, Revisions Number 1, date 11/9/2016, corrected pier dimensions to match plotted scale, made by MC, checked by MC, owner of record, Adam Decter, 20 Vine Street, Newton, Mass. Applicant, Adam Decter, 20 Vine Street, Newton, Mass, project, object location, 44 Pompanesett Island Road, Mashpee, Mass, Barnstable County. Project name, Pompanesett Island 44, assessors ID 106-23-D. Approved by MC, checked by MC, drawn by MC, date 10/13/2016. Also make reference to several department head input, I don't know if you've already read them into the record?
Yep.
And.
Those will apply.
Guess that's the motion.
Okay, do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye. Well done, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Checklist complete.
Thank you. You didn't reference this.
No, this is the same plan. See what I mean? What he did is he just blew it up. Do you have a hammer?
You're way ahead of me.
Hey, don't you forget it.
All right, can we pass some of that paperwork out, please?
Yeah, pass it all in.
Okay, here you go. Here you go. Hey, are you gonna have it? Some more. Down to the blue screen, which is slowly.
Help me.
That was quick, man, you're back quick. What's that? Excuse me?
Only they were all this simple.
So you got it?
Only they were all this simple.
He kinda handed it to us, didn't he?
16 Papunomic. Don't have a.
I know. I'm used to that. I can deal with it.
He's a big boy now.
You got it, baby.
So you wanna throw back a small one, too?
Home back.
We got a big one, let you down.
That's all they did.
There's only one of those.
Yeah. As far as I know, you wanna do two? Yeah, one left, one more. Leave one of the big ones, please.
Hang on. Hang on. Yes, killer.
Scott's back.
It's a major or minor modification.
Don't get used to me.
Okay, Jim, would you read the next new hearing?
Opening the hearing of 16 Papunomic Road. Owner Kathleen J. McRoberts requests modification to a special permit, parentheses, SP-2016-35, close parentheses, to allow for construction of a deck attached to the rear of the house in proposed accessory apartment on property located in R3 zoning district, MAP 61, parcel 46, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Well, you wanna share? Little share. But we wanna be able to read it. Does feel sick, huh?
Is this just one?
No.
Is this a one-pager?
Okay, so, we'll keep this. I think he goes to, that's the word.
Good evening, Joseph Butler for Kathleen McRoberts for 16 Papunomic Road, Mashpee, Mass. What we're proposing is to do a deck in the back, which would extend off the addition in-house, eight feet, which still leaves us a 17-foot setback, a setback in that area is 15 feet, and proposing to do a ramp in the front of the house. No change in setback, even with the front of the house.
This looks like the ramp.
Yes.
Now, when you talk about the deck, are you referring to this here?
No, the deck is in the back of the house.
Actually, grab the mic, if you would.
So, this is the back, so we've seen there's a deck.
Yeah, that's right, the deck's in the back of the house.
So where's the deck on these plans?
Right here.
Oh, Miss Fenton.
Is it on this plan, too?
It is, yeah, right here.
What's the.
Oh, it's the shaded area, it's not really called off.
Oh, so wait a second, it's.
This is the plot plan, so it's showing it's eight feet out, 25 feet currently to the setback, so it would leave a 17-feet setback in the back.
That's different than what was already approved?
The deck wasn't approved, correct, yeah. You guys approved the addition.
So what you're talking about is this?
Okay.
Right there?
Yes.
Do you have an updated one of these, with the deck on it and all this stuff?
Where is it? Yeah.
It went across the issue.
This is the.
Hopefully, there's another one.
But it's not on here.
It is on there.
It is.
Damn it.
Ours is.
Ours is. Oh, you know what? He drew that in. Did you draw this in yourself?
Yeah.
Ah, 'cause you didn't draw it into that one.
Okay, I'm caught up.
Is that allowable, hand-drawn?
Well, all the, this is just certifying the foundation. So that's fine. But the question comes down to, does it scale out? I don't have a scale on me.
Well, so what he's doing, I presume, is taking the 25 minus the eight, so he's using math and just.
Oh, don't make you guys do math, please.
No, you don't.
We just did it. And I checked it.
Twenty-five minus eight, right? Seventeen. Works.
That's that new math.
So where's lot coverage?
15.3.
And that's?
It was 14.7 prior, so with this additional, it ends up at 15.3.
So it's 15.3. So you did that.
I actually.
Your math.
Well, I called him and told him how much we're adding, just to double-check what I did, yeah, but it was 14.
What was the number before?
14.7.
14.4.
And it looks like it wouldn't exceed 20.
All right, I get some questions, if you would. This is the original house?
Yes.
And then?
That's the accessory apartment, which you guys approved.
What do we actually approve? The accessory apartment?
Yes.
Yes. And so what's happening is, is because they're adding on the deck, that wasn't part of the deal.
Okay.
Because if.
So we've already talked about the 40% and all that?
Yeah.
Yes, correct. Because the thing is now, if the deck was part of the original house, but didn't touch the accessory, it'd be a non-issue. But now it becomes, if they made it part of it, well, now that's changing what was originally approved, because it's being utilized by the accessory apartment now.
There's a slider going up to it.
So the sentence that you have, which is of recent, there is a question on a change to the interior, that is now nixed? There's no interior change?
We did, we flipped the kitchen. We moved the kitchen to the front, to the back, no structural change, just location.
So do you still have that question?
No, I don't. The only question came up was the fact is, now that you have a deck that's being utilized by the accessory apartment, which was not part of the original approval, that's what the deal is. So it's like a modification.
So he needs our approval, only on the deck, not in a change interior?
Well, the deck and the ramp, because it's all part of, no. The interior was still, the inside doesn't matter. As long as the square footage is the same. Who cares? Yeah.
I think over 20%, setbacks are okay.
I just did that so you could see what we did change, so you.
So the new proposed is 15.3?
Correct, yeah. So I think we're allowed up to 20% lot coverage.
Yes.
As long as you don't have issues with this stuff?
No, I don't.
So.
Just a modification. Because those two things were added that were not part of the original.
So he meets all the setbacks, even with, even using the deck as a setback? Even meets, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, but the whole thing is, is because it's now being utilized by the accessory apartment, it was not part of the original approval.
Understood.
Understood.
That's the key. That's solid.
If it wasn't just the back of the original house, it wouldn't be
So do we have to find this, number one, a minor modification, then, number two, approve it? Or do we have to just approve it? Do we have to find a minor modification so that he doesn't have to advertise, re-advertise? So I think there's two steps to this? Does that make sense?
Any questions from anybody on your board besides Ron? Anybody in the audience have any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. Ron?
I'd like to make a motion that we, that the board finds that the deck addition on the rear of the house and the ramp on 16 Papenomete Road as shown on a plan of foundation certification, location 16 Papenomete Road, Mashpee, Mass, prepared by Kathleen J. McRoberts, January 18th, 2017, and prepared by EAS Surveying Inc., PO Box 1729 Fox Sandwich, Mass. 02563, with modifications by the applicant in handwritten form only is a minor modification.
Okay, do we have any comments before we vote?
Well, I was gonna read those in the next one. You can read them all in now if you want. I was just thinking that we'd find minor and then go through the whole, again
We should've actually done the comments first before So let's read them in now.
Oh, to the inspections department? 16 Papenomete Road, the area is zoned R3 and is within the pre-post contact archaeology sensitivity area listed as high. Applicant is seeking a modification to a special permit 2016-35 to allow for construction of a deck attached to the rear of the house.
Any other comments?
DPW on the truck.
Conservation comments, 16 Papenomete Road. Property is not within the wetland jurisdictions.
For the health, no comment.
DPW?
No comment.
Nah, DPW is a problem. Not a problem, but an issue.
Do you have it?
Yes.
Read it if you would.
Okay, Catherine Laurent. Hi, Mary Ann, I understand that the above special permit authorized the addition of an accessory apartment and that the modification proposed is to allow the construction of a deck. The plan submitted for the original special permit and for the modification does not show any modification of the driveway to accommodate the three parking spaces required. I requested a condition be imposed on any approval requiring parking for a minimum of three vehicles be provided on the property. No on-street parking, and that the property owner apply for a curb cut permit from DPW for any proposed modification to the driveway, Papenomete Road, in a town road.
Why didn't this come up in the first?
Papenomete Road is a town road.
There's no curb on the street there.
Yeah, but she still calls it a curb cut. It really doesn't mean it's a curb there. My thinking though, Mr. Chairman, is I was just thinking that we, we find that it's a minor modification, then we condition it when we, if we choose to approve it. Does that make sense?
I concur. Basically, the way I'm listening to the comment made by the director, the DPW is probably just instructing you
Off-street parking.
That no off-street parking, it's all on-street. And like you said, there's no curb. Meet with her to have that conversation. So that's the best way I would approach this. Because if you don't have a curb, you make a curb cut. You know? It is what it is. But you have to have that conversation with her.
What about if we condition, if we choose to approve, subject to Catherine Lawrence, DPW approval, DPW director's approval? Whatever she requires. I mean, I think that even though he doesn't have a curb, you still may have to get a curb cut even though he doesn't have a curb.
The original driveway was wide enough, too wide, it's 40 feet deep. So there's enough for four cars in the driveway now.
Got it.
I think we raised over that originally.
I can include that in the second motion if you'd like me to. So
So where do we stand on the first?
So right now we have a motion. I don't think we have a second. We had a discussion. I made a motion.
Have all the comments done?
Yep.
Yes, and it's just, just, the motion I'm making is only in reference to the fact that it's a minor modification only.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Okay, let's go to the next motion.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we issue a modification to the, a minor modification to the special permit issued to Kathleen J. McRoberts of 16 Papenomete Road to allow for the construction, a special permit 2016-35. That's the original special permit. To allow for construction of a deck attached to the rear of the house and propose well, the original application was the proposed accessory apartment, but we're not modifying that. The only modification is to allow for the deck and to allow for a ramp exiting in the front of the house. And that's in an R3 zoning district, map 61 parcel 46, Mashpee, Mass. I'd like to make reference to a DPW comment which clearly states, as we all know, that there's three vehicles parking required and that will be all located on the property and not on the street. And the DPW director makes reference to the possibility of the need of a curb cut. So this motion is subject to your obtaining approval from the DPW director prior to the start of construction. And also off-street parking, not on-street parking, of three vehicles. And I don't think there's any other
Okay, we got a second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Could you just do me a favor, please? Because maybe we should use, if I may, Mr. Chairman? Could you, like, sign this? You've made these changes everywhere. Here you go. Sign a date. And just initial that, right there. And then initial that, too?
You wanna make those changes yourself, that's the way it goes.
Here you go. So, Jim? Yeah, so you can sign, just sign it and date it.
Actually, that's one that doesn't have it.
Um, it's got it.
Oh, it does.
It does. You don't have the dimensions on it, but that's all right. I'm okay with that. We have one that does.
No, no. I'll stamp that one there. He's signing.
Thank you, sir. Why don't you sign this one, too? You made some changes to this. Well, you made somebody changes. Look at this stuff. I like signatures. It may be worth money someday.
You never know.
This handwritten stuff gets me nervous. Thank you. 62 Riverside.
Hey, man, Scott voted.
You're not here again?
Too eager. Stay in play for a little while.
I have to sit here and do it. Make it official.
Exactly. You have to say next. Oh, why next?
That's why I got in line, so I wouldn't sign the wrong spot.
Yeah, you know what? Just try and do the right thing. You see these are people with all this, 16 actually is 12. I said they go, oh.
More than you're in, isn't it?
Okay. Sitting on the next hearing will be our four regular board members and Brad. Okay, Jim, would you read the next two new hearings? And we'll take one at a time to vote.
Opening up the first hearing of 62 Riverside Road. Petitionist Scott Thorpe requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of an attached garage with a bedroom above on property located in an R3 zoning district. Map 119, parcel 136, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Owner of record Barbara Reed. And opening also, 62 Riverside Road. Petitionist Scott Thorpe requests a variance of the front, rear, side, and lot coverage under 174-31 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of an attached garage with a bedroom above on property located in an R3 zoning district. Map 119, parcel 136, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Owner of record Barbara Reed.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, for the record, just your name and address.
Scott Thorpe, 62 Riverside Road, Mashpee, Mass.
Down that way, those guys. Oh, the second page. Oh, it's two pages.
So you the owner or?
I am the owner, yes.
What about Barbara Reed?
Well, we proposed this for, before we passed on the house. So Barbara was actually the owner of the house, and then we passed on the first.
So you bought it?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. Go ahead.
So where Riverside Road and Clamshell Lane meet? On Clamshell Lane, on the left side of the house where the deck is, we're proposing to put a 23-by-24 two-car garage with a bedroom up above.
So if you're looking at the front of the house, to the right is a driveway already, I believe?
Correct, it's a stone driveway.
Is there also a, is there a deck there?
There is, yes. Yep, there's a 12-by-18 deck that's attached.
So you wanna take the deck out?
Yeah, you do, under here. It's buried. Keep looking.
There we go.
That was the deck. Now here's
And then behind
Disappears, the garage gets built.
Correct, and behind that is the bulkhead going downstairs. So that's why we can't push the two-car garage beyond that, plus the septic.
Is that the 5'4" by 6'2"?
Correct.
Okay, well, you're asking to go over the 20% lot coverage.
Yeah, it's 20.9.
Yeah, normally we do not do that. We haven't approved over 20 in quite some time. Do you have a hardship we could use to try and get you over 20?
I believe that the shed is included in that, and if there was a problem, I could certainly take the shed down.
Okay, what's the dimensions of the shed?
It's a 8 by 10.
Which is?
Eighty square feet.
So, what was I saying?
Eighty square feet.
So I have to
So quick math, what does that bring it down to?
Well, you'd have to know what the existing structures are. It's awful how to do the math. You'd have to add up all the length by width with the jogs to understand.
So do you know the answer to that?
I don't.
Well, how did you, how did you come up with 20.9%?
Yeah, who did these?
My engineer, my engineer did. Yeah, Jimmy did.
He's good at all the calculations.
Yeah.
And if I could, if I just, may I ask a question? One thing we've ran into recently, and that is, an applicant is not an owner. So what happens is this board, if this board were to find in your favor, you'd then get a variance, let's say, in the name of your predecessor. Because that's how the application is. So then, you wouldn't be able to record it. And you'd come back to us and say, can I change the application in someone else's name? Now, maybe this board could do something different. Remember, we had that a month or so ago? In the same scenario where you just, somebody just bought the house and the application, remember that, Mary Ann? So you would not be able to put it on record with the wrong person.
Yeah, you don't wanna do that.
No, I don't, but that's what I was advised to when I came to the
Yeah, we just ran into it recently. Just happened.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah, no one's at fault. We just, and, and the person came back to us and said, I couldn't put it on record.
But does he legally own it? Does he legally own it now?
Well, but that's, that's if, in fact, the board sees to, that's probably the last thing we have to deal with.
He's saying what, what the application says.
Right.
So the application is not really correct right now, is that?
Because the name's not on it.
Is that true?
That's how he read it, so
The application's
Says the owner of record is
Petition was made by you.
Myself, yes.
But the owner of record was
Barbara Reed.
Right.
And that's the way it would be approved.
We hadn't closed on the property until the first.
So
And I was trying to get here
To meet the deadline.
To meet the deadline, so that's why we
Meet what deadline? Filing deadline, if not, it gets pushed into another
So I'm trying to understand something, though. So
You're asking?
You're Scott Thorpe.
I am, yes, sir.
And so you made the application?
I did.
And, and the land's in your name now?
Correct.
But he made it before he bought it.
So I can meet the deadline, so I can meet with you guys tonight, yes.
And so time is of the essence, is that what the problem is?
It is, yes.
Do you have any
I don't see a problem.
Aggrieved butters, that could be
Because what happened on the other one was a little bit more involved.
Yeah, that was different. That was just the opposite.
Right.
See, the person that owned it before, they used her name to file it under, and then it changed hands. So she went down to record it under the new deed and couldn't. So it's just the opposite of you.
I don't, I don't I hear what you're saying. I'm not seeing an issue.
Less of a problem, less of a problem.
But the focus on what's before us, I do like to point out, especially when we're talking about the issue of lot coverage, I mean, it's, the garage is even smaller than a normal two-car garage. Because usually two-car garages are 24 by 24, and this isn't. It's a 23 by 24.
Right, that's why we did that.
Right, so we're talking about 0.9%?
My only concern is, is I just don't wanna send a message because it's taken us so long to get to 20 and not go over 20. And we've sent so many messages to so many attorneys that come in front of this board, especially at New Seabury, where we're building, you know, large, large buildings on posted stamped lots, and we've got attorneys to understand that if somebody comes to us at 20.1, we're saying no.
All right, why don't we do this? Here's something I'm gonna throw out there. The board can also make the condition that the engineer do the math showing that with this proposal, without the shed, what the, what the lot coverage is. If the lot coverage does not go over 20%
I'm doing that right now.
You move forward. And if it's still over 20%, then it either comes back or he has to modify the plans. And the applicant seems to be agreeable to that.
So the lot is 7250?
Correct, yes.
So that's one number we need.
And you've got the size of the house.
I'm sorry, the shed was 8 by 10?
Correct.
What is the lot size again? I'm sorry.
It's 7250.
What did you say, Bill? Shed is?
8 by 10.
So that's 80 square feet.
Right.
Correct.
So 7170.
And 23 by 24 is, anybody have a calculator?
Okay, I'm doing this myself.
Billy's got it.
He goes to 19.75.
Could I also
Yanking the shed.
May I also make a suggestion? That maybe, as also part of the condition, he's gonna be required to submit an ASBILT.
Right.
And in that ASBILT, the engineer has to put on record the lot coverage. So if those numbers come out right
You bring this back, shed gone, all the numbers updated.
And the numbers truly depict the fact that it's under 20, or 20% or under, which it seems like it would be, but I won't, I don't know if you want to be...
Trust my math?
Listen, I, I think it's probably best to have somebody check it.
So, on the, you know, once again, you know, another suggestion on the condition that when he applies for, if the board grants it, for the addition, that at the same time puts in for the demolition, the removal of the shed, at the same time.
You got that right?
Could you say one more time, please?
Huh?
Say one more time, please.
I'm listening for more, more of the...
I can't look at you with a straight face.
Thank you very much.
My recommend, my, my suggestion, if the board seems fit to grant it, that a condition is that when the applicant applies for the proposed addition, that at the same time applies for the removal of the 8 by 10 shed.
Plus, come back with an updated plan.
Well, he's going to have to submit the ASBILT to me with...
But what happens if the ASBILT says that it's 21, 20.1? We want to make sure it's less than 20 or less prior to him getting a building permit. So, don't we want him to make, don't we want him to get...
When the foundation comes in and it goes, does 20.1, then...
I don't have a problem. I think, I think Bill's numbers are probably correct, and if it's...
All right, you're on the hot seat, my man. But wouldn't it also be nice to have a piece of paper depicting it before you get the building permit, though?
In a perfect world...
It's not, I don't think it...
No, 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 what I'm saying, but, the applicant is, and I'm not here to make his case, but it's a unique situation where he was just by the property...
This is actually Phil's seat, can you just get this updated?
With the shed removed, if you update it, and bring it in for your application for your building permit, and it depicts 20% or less, you're also...
Bring it to me, please.
And for the applicant...
And I'll forward it through to some people, yeah, I'll take care of it. And I'll, and I'll take care of it from now, I'll make sure it gets notified with the board, say that the math, no permit there. No, 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 no. No.
Sounds good to me.
No, you're going to get that plan done up, correct me if I'm wrong, with the engineer not showing that the shed's not there, and this is what the new lot coverage comes out to. When I have that plan, I'm going to notify the secretary of the ZBA, I've got this, and she will in turn notify the chair and someone else, maybe.
Come in and sign it off.
There you go.
So, if I were...
We got a bulkhead for your basement.
If I were, if I were to make a motion, it would not include a variance from lot coverage, let's put it that way. So, he has to prove to the zoning officer that he is 20% or less.
Right.
But also be aware of, and I'm being serious. You're right there. You put on a deck, you want to put a pool, you want to put another structure there, you're going to be back here, and as you hear how the board is talking, we got the 20%, just be aware of that. Because you've already, you're about maxed out.
Okay, so, I'll get this back to Jimmy, he'll get it back to me, and then I'll...
Yeah, we actually have to read in some comments and questions from any in the audience. So, we have comments from any...
Several, you've got, you've got several here. None of them are probably...
All right, I have one from conservation, I'll read this one. 62 Riverside Property is not within Wetlands jurisdiction. DPW says, this is dated, it's an email to Mary Ann dated Monday, May 22nd. I'm Mary Ann, while Riverside Road is a town road, it appears from the site plan submitted for the proposed garage, that access to the garage will actually be from Clamshell Lane, a private road. No permit will therefore be required from DPW for the curb cut, or one less thing to do. Okay, I have something from Board of Health. 62 Riverside Road, Board of Health comments, septic system has been approved for setback from proposed garage slab to existing septic tank with a 40 mil rubber slash vinyl membrane to be installed at the Garage Foundation as mitigation to the variance. Septic capacity is five bedrooms. Floor plans have been submitted and reviewed for the garage and bedroom above. Septic has been inspected in March of 2017. Please condition building permit and ZBA decision to include required installation of the membrane. Final bedroom count will be three. So, that's got to be part of it.
Gotcha.
Okay, it's also going to be part of the record.
Yeah.
Do we have, did I miss any other comments?
Building inspectors' comments, did you read those?
No, go ahead.
62 Riverside Road, the area is zoned R3 and is in a pump and acid overlay district. The rear portion of the property is within the post-contact archaeology-sensitive area, listed as high. This applicant is seeking a written finding on a 17417 of the zoning bylaws about construction of attached garage with a bedroom above. Of note, there is an increase in lot coverage. Not anymore.
Okay, do you understand what the pre-contact archaeologically-sensitive area means, high? That means there could be some archaeological-sensitive stuff that you might hit when digging, bones, et cetera?
Thank you.
Follow those directions to a T, stop what you're doing.
I think we got it all, but we just need to understand what he's varying from before any motions can be made, Mr. Chairman.
I guess, I guess the question at hand is, you're looking for front, side, and rear setback relief?
Correct, but the front is actually 62 Riverside, but the house faces...
There you go, so...
So, there's the, you can allow...
So, 17.8, and front yard setback is 40, so 40 minus 17.8.
So, you can do it.
27.2.
So, that, being a corner lot, that solves the variance issues for sidelines.
So, you're looking for a variance in front yard at 22.2 feet?
It's a two-front yard.
Right.
Okay, and then what's, so what would side yard be?
So, the actual address is Riverside.
Nothing, because it's 15 now.
Yes.
It's 15.
So, no side?
No side.
Fronts, and then what's the rear?
Rear.
Still 15.
No rear.
So, at this point, sir, are you only asking for a front yard setback variance? That's all you're asking for?
Yes.
Okay.
22.2.
Because it's pushable.
Because your application depicts others than that, and I just want to make sure that you, I guess, withdraw those requests.
No, actually, that bylaw refers to front, rear, and side setbacks, that's the bylaw.
It's just telling you, yeah, what they are.
All right, okay, so, all right.
What's the setback on the side? Is it 18.9 or 13.5?
It's 13.5, 18.9 is from the deck.
That's the existing house, though.
Yeah, that's the existing house.
Right.
So, it would be 18.9 would be where the garage is, if you see the red mark that's on...
Well, it's the closest, so it's, it stays at 13.5, so you're, it's pre-existing.
It's pre-existing, right.
So, that needs to be mentioned in probably anyway.
Do we have to talk about pre-existing?
Well, all you're saying is, is it making it more non-conforming?
No, it does not.
Doesn't get any closer, we've always determined that it wasn't, if in fact, you didn't get any closer, well...
I have to say, it's not making it more non-conforming.
Yeah, but that's under a finding, this is variance.
He's not asking for a variance, though.
He's on section two.
He is, front yard.
Number two.
Not for the construction that he's making.
Sure.
That's an existing dwelling.
Yeah, exactly right.
Yeah, we can still give the variance. That way, it points up any potential issues. So, is it 25?
No, 15.
15.
Got it.
13.5?
So, it's a, it's a foot and a half.
Correct.
So, 1.5 feet.
So...
But that's, that was there...
Right.
That's a pre-existing.
Right, we can just clean it up for the record.
So, there are two requests here. The first one, as I understand, is a written finding. So, why don't we take that one first? How do you want me to handle a motion in reference to the written finding?
It's not making it more non-conforming, that's what you're doing.
So, we just got to find that it's not making it any more non-conforming, in reference to the written finding. Then, under the variance section, which is the next app, we have front yard of 22.2, and what else?
Of the proposed structure.
Yeah?
And then, you've got the, you want to mention, which is what the chair is, is referring to, about giving relief to the existing structure, which...
Your call, Mr. Chairman.
And then, the other issue...
So, what would you like me to say?
Existing structure relief of 1.5 feet from side setback.
1.5 feet side yard.
Southwest.
Well, here we go.
You know what I'm talking about?
I do.
If you say southwest, it's southwest.
Whatever you say, Captain.
All right, so, before we make a... Anybody in the audience have any questions, comments, concerns? If so, come right up, grab the mic, and give us your name and address.
Hold on, grab the mic if you would.
What's your address?
62 Riverside Road.
Okay, thank you.
And I was just wondering on this rear variance. I have, I was given a map, and it shows the layout of this house here, and I was just wondering if this is going to come any closer, it's only 13 feet now, so they're already in a variance, and I was wondering if this is going to come any closer.
She's not talking into the mic, it's too, I'm sorry.
The addition, we're going the opposite way. But, oh, well, that was really very, very interesting, but it's kind of a non-conforming lot, as all of the...
Wait for a second. Why don't I show you, if you just, real quick, so...
Grab that mic also.
Yes.
Look professional.
Very professional. So, right here, you're on this lot here?
Yes.
All right, so, 13.5 is the house, his garage is actually going forward.
Okay.
So, nothing is going to be closer to your lot line than existing today.
I think it's moving away.
That's the septic tank for the leach field, it's underground. That's the actual leach field. It's all underground.
All right.
You did that very well.
Anybody else in the audience? Anybody in the board have any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Ron, would you?
What's that?
It is not mine, I don't believe, I didn't bring anything up.
Ron, would you make a motion on the first of two?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve a written finding for Scott Thorpe at 62 Riverside Road under section 17417 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of an attached garage with a bedroom above on property located in R3 zoning district, map 119, Prussel 136, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record Barbara Reed. I'd like to strike that last sentence, owner of record is Scott Thorpe. And in issuing the written fine, the board finds that it is in compliance with 48 Section 6, and that that is not more detrimental to the neighborhood or zoning, et cetera, et cetera, and that it meets all criteria of 48 Section 6. I'd like to make reference to a site plan, project title, proposed garage, 62 Riverside Road, Mashpee, Mass., prepared for Scott and Linda Thorpe, 62 Riverside Road, Mashpee, Mass., prepared by DeSalle and Burke Associates, Inc., 11266 Furnace Brook Parkway, Suite 401, Quincy, Mass., 02169, dated April 22nd, 2017. What's that? Can't see that, I wrote something on that, what's that word right there? What's that road right there? I wrote on it, DOB.
Structure, entry, relief.
Job, I got it, job, I got it. Sorry, job number 2017 D I S C, scale 1 inch equals 20, sheet 1 of 1. We have some comments I'd like to add to the written finding. First of all, the reference plan that I referenced needs to, prior to a building permit, clearly depict the fact that it is 20% lot coverage or less, and he's going to obtain that by removal of the shed or any other means he needs to. I mean, I'll read this into both, I think it's important. And it makes reference to, I also make reference to Board of Health comments from the town of Mashpee. Riverside Road, Board of Health comments, septic's variance has been approved for setback from proposed garage slab to existing septic tank with 40 mil rubber membrane to install at the Garage Foundation as mitigation for the variance. Septic's capacity is five bedrooms, floor plans have been submitted and reviewed for the garage and bedroom above, septic has been inspected in March of 2017. Please condition building permit and ZBA decision to include required installation of the membrane, final bedroom count to be three. So, I make reference to that. Do you want me to make reference to the, to the relief of the 1.5 in this, or you want me to wait till the variance?
Variance, I think.
Yeah, because we're just doing a written finding.
To read those two parts.
Okay. If we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go to the next one, if you would.
Okay, one second, I just want to find that, that document, do you have the...
Which one?
Is that the variance one? That's the one, variance, that's it, okay, I forgot that one. So, I'd like to make a motion that we issue a variance to Scott Thorpe of 62 Riverside Road for the front yard setback in the amount of 22.2 feet.
On Clamshell Lane.
On Clamshell Lane, the total required is 40, the total shown is 17.8. I'd like to also make reference to relief that is sought for the existing structure, although not sought, relief that will be issued for the existing structure in the amount of 1.5 feet for the side yard in the southwest corner. And so, moving on, so that's front yard and side yard for the existing structure, we're not issuing any relief on lot coverage under section 17431 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of an attached garage with a bedroom above on property located in R3 zoning district, map 119, Prussel 136, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record, strike, no owner of record is Scott Thorpe. Having said that, I'd like to also make a motion, or include in this motion, the exhibits that I included in the written finding prior to this.
You got to say condition on motion.
Excuse me?
You have to use the word condition on motion.
I'm sorry, condition. I've been corrected by the vest.
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Do we have a second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So much paper.
Now, there's two of these.
This one's dirty now. Sample two, I forgot.
Hey, Mike? Excuse me, so I didn't include in the motion about, prior to billment, because I didn't include lot coverage in the variance, so he has to prove to you, right? See what I'm saying?
Yep.
I felt it would be cleaner that way, does that make sense?
Whatever works.
Making sure.
It's got it.
Could I get one of the double sets, please? It didn't come out, right? So, you didn't come out, right?
But it's not really, you have to look at that lot, because it's 1749 on one side, and it's 115 on the other.
Maybe he's taking lot square footage.
Yeah, but you can't really just do 115 times 60 for 170.
So Billy had it off when he got up.
Everything all set? We got that both of them?
Yep, they're both here.
They're both there. All right, so I was doing a lot of work and I think.
Yeah.
I was impressed, though, with what you did.
Right your way.
I'm not supposed to say anything.
Is it all set?
Everybody happy? Jim, would you read the next two? New hearings, and again, we'll vote on them separately, but read both if you would.
Opening up the first, 5 Cantor Lane, owner Neil Cantor. Request for written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family dwelling deck and garage on property located in R3 zoning district, map 119 parcel 1A-0 Mashpee, Massachusetts. Also opening up 5 Cantor Lane, owner Neil Cantor, request a variance.
Oh, okay, no boy.
Under 174-31 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family dwelling deck and garage on a property located in R3 zoning district, map 119 parcel 1A-0 Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Hi. My name's Neil Cantor. I'm in the, you know, town of Falmouth. I'm in 5 Cantor Lane.
That's a big commute from your house to that one, isn't it? Mile?
I'm visiting my mom at least twice a week.
There you go.
This property's been owned by my family for.
Excuse me, can you not hear you? I think they can't hear you, the mic.
This property's been owned by my family for approximately 50 years. It was, it was, it is a summer unwinterized cottage. Very light construction. Built originally in the probably 30s, added on in the 50s, and remodeled many times over the years. It's currently uninhabitable, mainly due to the septic system failure. And we deemed it not worthy of reconstructing because it's essentially not up to code in, in any account. So what we're proposing is to tear down the house and build a new house, and my wife and myself move there in our retirement. The complication is because Cantor Lane was configured when the subdivision was made in 1970, I'm sorry, 1969.
Private zoning.
The setback requirements back then were a lot different than they are now. But the house was in place when the road was, when the lot was subdivided and the road was put in. So what we're proposing is to build a new house in currently laid out and that, um, designed pretty much of the old house. We're want to, we're going to increase the setback approximately 2 feet to Cantor Lane and increase the setback approximately 1 and 1/2 feet from the butter on the, on the west side, which happens to be my sister. That setback is, um, is where the deck is going to be, the foundation setback is going to be increased from 10 feet to 17 feet. If you're interested, I have a highlighted version of the proposal, which might be easier to, to see.
Sure.
The red is the existing structure.
So that's coming out, is it?
That's going to be moved.
Okay, yeah, it's too close to the lot line, it looks like.
That, that's.
And that's removed also?
It's going to be raised, yes.
Gotcha.
Where are you proposing on moving that shed to?
Well, we're hoping to move it up into this corner of the lot.
As long as it's 5 feet off the lot.
As long as it's 5 feet off of the lot lines, both corners.
Yes, we understand that. It's still to be determined, that may have to be raised. I haven't gotten to digging under the foundation yet, to see if we can move it.
Okay, well, on the plan that we sign off. I need it on there with some dimensions.
With a new location.
Yeah, because, you know, this is going to be the official record.
Okay.
So we can't say, yeah, I think we're going to put it somewhere there.
So I guess, basically, if you understand what he's saying here, if that's where you're going to put it, and it's going to be no closer than 5 feet, but if you decide you're just going to level it, that's fine also, you don't have to change anything on the plan. But the whole issue is, if you're going to relocate that shed in that location, it can be no closer than 5, that's all.
Any lot line.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but it, as far as the expediency of getting the variance, would it be easier for me just to demolish the, the shed?
That's up to the board.
You could always come back at a later date, you know, for the.
To move it?
For the shed.
If you want to move it closer.
No, if.
Oh, because that's, uh, yeah.
Wait a minute, to, correct me if I'm wrong, if he comes back, let's say in a year, and says, I want to put a shed 10 feet from this lot line, 10 feet from this lot line, he doesn't have to come here.
No, he doesn't, no. If he has, if he was going to move it 5 feet, he doesn't have to be here either.
What if I don't move it at all? And I am allowed to keep it?
When was the shed put there?
Before my parents bought it, they bought the property in 1960.
Pre-existing non-conformity.
So, so really, we have.
You can leave it there.
Leave it.
Can't do a thing, really.
Kenny, what if it needed to be rebuilt, can you rebuild it in the same spot? If it says it's falling apart and you can't use it?
Well, the question comes down to, does it have a foundation, it gets involved.
Then he's going to come back for a finding if he's going to rebuild it, just like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Robowski 101.
I just moved chairs. Yeah, but honestly, and you've heard other people tonight, I'm sure your neighbors would appreciate it if you moved it away from the lot line.
Oh, I'm, I'm planning to either move it or get rid of it. I don't know other than you to ask, but what if I, what if I want to build a new one in the future? Do you have to, do I have to go the?
Not, the only time you have to come back here, as long as you're 5 feet, you're likely good.
It's under 120 square feet.
Yes, it's 10 by 12.
As long as it's not close on lot coverage, which he's not.
Right.
He's already including that square footage in the lot.
He's 16.2, including it.
If it's over 120 square feet, doesn't it require some?
Footings.
Footings?
Well, there's a lot of it more involved, the question comes down to, which I have to refresh myself on it, but if it's in the flood zone, all that sort of stuff. But right now, when it comes to the shed, when you get to that point in life, that's when you, you come to my office, and then we'll go through it, because right now, we're doing a lot of what ifs, what ifs, what ifs. I think our main focus right now is on.
It is.
The proposal of the building.
It is, yeah. So, so a little curveball is.
This is not within wetland jurisdiction.
Well, but it's in the flood zone, so now you get into some other issues, don't you, in locating sheds, right?
Who were you talking about earlier?
How is it not within wetlands jurisdiction, but it's in the flood zone?
It can be, that can happen.
Yeah?
Sure?
I didn't, I thought it was.
So, it's a 100-year flood zone, or even a 50-year flood zone.
Well, let's see what conservation have to say.
All it says is not within the wetland's jurisdiction.
There you go.
Yeah. So, nothing in reference to shed or building or anything else, because it is located in an A flood zone. Wasn't that going to affect the design of the house?
Well, it does, but it's a building code issue, not what's before, it's not zoning, we're talking building code.
Okay, it's not going to affect this plan, heights, or anything?
No, it's, it's a building code issue.
Okay. Stay out of flood zones.
We've got a proposed lot coverage of 15.
16.2.
Setbacks, nice lot, big. So we're looking for a written finding and.
Variance, he does need some se- some variance relief.
And there are some letters, I don't know if they have anything to.
Okay. Before we get into the comments on the boards, anybody have any questions on the board? Anybody in the audience? If so, come right up, grab the mic. And name an address, if you would.
My name is Bob Lynch, and.
Diane Brace.
We're the Butters.
From what address?
3 Secant Point Road.
And so, 3, and we're perfectly supportive of what's going on, and.
You're also 3?
Yes, 3 Secant Point. My mother is the one from 60 Riverside Road, who chose to spend her 93rd birthday here with you tonight.
Yeah, what a lucky lady.
Yeah, exactly.
Real hard about this.
But we just wanted to say, we think it's a great plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that it for comments?
Yep.
Okay, and let's read some comments in from different departments. Anybody? We did conservation already.
Inspection.
Inspections. Would you read inspections, Ron?
Um, certainly, 5 Cantor Lane, the area is zoned R3, and is within the pre-contact archaeology-sensitive area listed as high. The applicant is seeking a written finding under 17417 of the zoning bylaw to allow for demolition construction of a new single-family home. And the next one is, are we taking them both at the same time?
Yeah, well, we've got to vote.
So you want me to read the next?
Please.
Okay, so, next one would be 5 Cantor Lane, the area is zoned R3 and is in an appropiated area overlay district. This property is also within the pre-contact archaeology-sensitive area listed as high. The applicant is seeking a variance under 17431, 23, to construct a single fam- family home in violation of the following setbacks, 27.6 feet short from the front setback of Cantor Lane, and the proposed deck being 3 feet short of the 15-foot front foot side yard requirement. So that makes it easy.
We have border health? Yes, we do, I'll read border health. 5 Cantor Lane, border health comment, septic design plan approved as a repair for 3 bedrooms. Additional bedrooms not allowed due to well on a budding property. Cannot maintain 150 feet to proposed leach, leaching from well. No floor plans submitted, so number of bedrooms could not be determined. Existing dwelling to be raised according to demolition checklist. Asbestos and rodent control inspections required. That's from the border health.
What else do we have?
Are you interested in seeing it?
Absolutely.
Proposed floor plan?
Sure.
Billy, 27.6 feet short of the front. So, so you got 3 bedrooms.
Scott, any other comments do we have? I just want to see the floor plan. I'm sorry? I just want to see the floor plan.
So, 27.6, so that would be 12.4 plus 27. So it'd be 30, 40 feet. Okay. And then the side? Which would be.
Conservation comments says property not within wetlands jurisdiction, we've already read that in already.
There is right there.
Did I miss any comments from any departments?
That's from DPW. All right, no, just making sure, because they've been commenting tonight.
Westwoodside.
Redrows in, did we?
Yes, we did.
Inspection?
This is right here, Westwoodside.
Yep.
Did you take a look at these?
Yep, we did. Yeah, Bruce.
Did you take a look at these?
I did not, and I referred to Scott, I'm sure he did a great job, and I'm not worried about him in any way, shape.
All right, um, would you like to make a motion on the first one, please?
I would like to make a motion that the board issues a written finding to Neil Cantor of 5 Cantor Lane under 17417 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family dwelling deck and garage on a property located in R3 zoning district, map 119 parcel 1A-0 Mashpee, Mass. The board's, in issuing the final, the board determines that all conditions of a written finding under Mash General Laws 48 section 6 have been found, have been, have been found to be correct. The site plan that, in reference to this project, is sewer disposal system design, 5 Cantor Lane Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record Neil Cantor, 15 Ostrom Road, East Falmouth, Mass. Applicant Neil Cantor, 15 Ostrom Road, East Falmouth, Mass. Sheet number 1 of 1 dated 3/24/2017, drawing file number Cantor ECP2, prepared by Cape Town Island Engineering, drawing title, septic design plan, assessor's information 119-1A-0, signed by Matthew C. Costa, number 52282, professional land surveyor. Revision 1, date 15, 5/15/17, changed to 3-bedroom design by MC, approved by MC. And there are some comments in the fol- in the folder that have been read into the record.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go to the next one.
I'd like to make a motion that we issue a variance to Neil Cantor of 5 Cantor Lane. Actually, 2 variances, the first one being, we're varying 27.6 feet on the front yard. It is only showing on the plan 12.4, and the required distance is 40 feet. Also, the second variance would be the side yard on the western side. It is required to be 15, it is depicted as only 12, and so your variance will be in the amount of 3 feet. These variances are under 17431 of the zoning bylaws. This is to repair and, this is to raise and replace a single-family dwelling deck and garage on property located in R3 zoning district, map 119 parcel 1A-0 Mashpee, Mash. And I'm, do you want me to read? I'll read it all. And, and in finding this, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of variance under Mash General Law 48 section 10. And do you want me to make reference to the site plan again?
Same site plan.
Same site plan, same comments. Do we need to, should we make reference to these?
John?
Do you want me to make references?
Yeah, I'm just looking at one thing, though. I'm not sure where the front door is, because we got a 12 floor here by the garage. We have a 12.0 off of the proposed deck. So I'm not sure where the front door is. It doesn't, where is the front door? Over here?
Well, you got the driveway coming in through here.
Right, okay. Is this still Cantor Lane here?
I was using what the zoning officer gave up.
There's the front door right there. Right, but you see this? That's 12 four? Yeah. That is.
12 feet, this is what we just gave him a variance from.
Right, we gave him a variance on 12 feet.
No, you did, you said 12 feet.
No, I said 12 feet. I swear to you.
Said 12 feet, because he needs a 3-foot variance.
Yeah, so it's 12 feet, it's a total required 15, and so he actually needs a variance in 3 feet. He's got a 3-foot variance.
Right. Okay, fine, I misheard.
It's all right, I'll accept your apologies later.
Why not?
Okay. I'd like to make also reference to a set of construction, or actually, building plans which show, which are A1 and A2, which are scale 1, equals 1 quarter inch, equals 1 foot. Drawn by SPD, the heading on it is residential commercial design for Cantor Residence, 5 Cantor Lane Mashpee, Mass., drawn by Sean. Okay. Excuse me?
Bissonette.
Oh, Sean Bissonette. Cape Cod Home Design Plans dot com. Above A1, A2, I see no revisions on them.
Hold on.
Those aren't the scale. Says quarter inch here, but those aren't quarter inch.
You cheated.
The house is going to be smaller. They follow these plans.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll start.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's it?
You're done?
We are all set?
Happy birthday.
Yes, happy birthday is right.
I hope it's something else after this.
We enjoyed your company. All right, I just need one more of the flat ones, please.
She's pretty spunky for ninety-three.
Okay. This is, well, this is, this too. You can use this one. This is stamped.
That's stamped. Yeah, he's already got all folded though, it makes life easier for me.
Yeah, but we still got to get rid of that one.
Thank you.
So...
He's a nice guy.
He's spunky. He's spunky for ninety-three, huh?
Yeah, he looks good.
His old is wrong.
Did you go fishing yet?
I haven't gone fishing yet.
Where are you going?
I don't know, I gotta try to find the place you wanted to go Thursday tomorrow, but I'm leaving for LA on Friday at six o'clock in the morning. I can't go fishing now. We'll find a time. We'll find a time. I belong to a fishing hub up in Westminster. I want to take him there.
Okay. Yep.
Oh, I see. Hold on there.
So, both?
Yep.
Perfect. Jim, would you read the last new hearing, please?
Opening the hearing on Forty-four Shore Drive. Owner Kevin Dorni requests a variance of the front yard setback on 174 dash thirty-one of the zoning bylaws. To allow for construction of a deck and conversion of the attached garage into a three-season porch. Unproperly located in R3 zoning district and the pumpernasset overlay district. Map one eighteen parcel six four.
Last but not least. My name's Kevin Dorni, I am the... What do you want, Shore Drive? We're here seeking a variance to the setback requirements on our side yard. As shown on the plans that you have in front of you.
Did you just say side yard?
It's actually a corner lot.
Corner lot, yes.
So, you get two fronts?
Well, it should be front yard, right.
Off and shore.
Yeah.
Off of bluff.
Off and shore is correct.
So, it's actually, if I may say this, so it's actually two front yard setbacks?
Yeah, well, actually, we're looking for a variance only on one side.
Okay.
Yeah, he's okay here.
Gotcha.
Well, he's not coming that way.
The front door is actually on shore, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's thirty, it's twenty-five and...
So, it's pre-existing at twenty-nine nine?
This is the issue.
Yes, the issue is off the block.
Yeah.
Gotcha. But being a corner lot, we get some relief there. Because normally, if it was the side yard, it'd be fifteen, I believe. So, you're going from whatever it was, twenty-six, eight, to eighteen, seven, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, what's the, so it's forty foot required?
No, twenty-five and fifteen. Pumpernasset.
Oh.
Pumpernasset Beach.
You've heard of the place, right?
Yeah. So, it's twenty-five, Kelly?
Yeah, I know.
Well, no, he's, I'm correct memory, you're saying, so what's this, so what would that side yard be?
Twenty-five.
Okay.
So, the difference.
So, eighteen is twenty-five minus the eighteen, seven is what you're saying?
Yeah.
That's right. What's prompted the request frankly is the need for some additional space inside the house. We bought the home in two thousand and thirteen, and at the time, I had one grandchild. For those of you that happen to be grandparents or parents, you realize that as your family grows, more and more paraphernalia is brought in. Whether it's beds, playpens, toys. And so, we wanted to expand into the garage to try to provide some relief to that. In addition to which, we've got an additional grandchild since we purchased the property, and my daughter is expecting a child in October.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That plus my ninety-two-year-old mother-in-law is living with us. So...
Congratulations.
First second.
So, having a little refuge is pretty important. And in thinking through the desire for more space, we engaged Mike to help us prepare some plans for how we would be able to utilize the space both inside and out. We've discussed the plans with several of our abutters and several neighbors, and three of them have actually provided written support for the initiative. And I have those with me if you'd like to see them.
So, the conversion of the garage to the room isn't really...
No.
An aspect for us, it's just the deck.
It's the deck.
Yeah.
That's what we understood, it was just the decking.
And I'll make a comment on that.
But it, it's, the deck is really important in terms of providing some additional outside space as well as access from an existing garage, garage, excuse me, an existing parking area which you can see on bluff. So, that flow is pretty straightforward in terms of carrying luggage and other things, you know, from the parking area into the house.
Yeah, they kept it under twenty percent. It's not, it's not a huge deck, I mean, it's sufficient.
No, when the applicant first approached me about a month and a half ago, maybe two months, what he had proposed was a lot smaller. But as he stated, when I was asking him, well, I knew even the deck he had proposed, he had come before the board. As I was listening to him talk, he started talking about the kids and this, and then, you know, the mother-in-law, then I'm starting to think of, okay, no. What he had proposed, it would be very difficult if a wheelchair was ever needed to set accessing that area. So, I went, you're going to need something a lot larger, you know, in other words, it's not, it's not user-friendly. And it was really more confining than anything else. In the front, he couldn't really come out any further because already he was getting into a window, as you will see on the side of the house.
Okay, I can see it on this point.
Right, so, that is what you don't want because especially with children, you don't want them, as he would have pictures, would show, you don't want a child playing there, going through the glass, big problem. So, it made more sense on safety issues to go off on that side. And even made more sense where, that's where they're going to be parking all the time now, so the majority of the activity is going to be along that side of the road. So, it made more sense, that's where you should have it. That's where we should be a little bit more buffed out, that's where you're going to be utilizing more, especially with, you know, something like right down the road is the ocean. And he goes, well, then everybody's going to be plopping their clothes there, the kids, the whole day.
Bluff Ave is not as busy a road, Shore Drive is...
Right.
Extremely busy road.
So...
More traffic on Bluff Ave.
This proposal made, safety-wise, made more sense to me than what he originally had proposed.
Shore Drive is crazy on a Saturday, Saturday and a Sunday.
If any of you are police officers, you could stop by and rent tickets for the speeders on that place as well and...
Anyone that goes over fifteen miles an hour on Shore Drive on a Saturday or Sunday, even with the speed bumps, people fly down that road. There's a million kids on bikes, there's people with strollers, and people still fly down the road.
But you're absolutely right.
Oh, I see it all the time.
It's frightening.
So, like I said, safety-wise, that made more sense, especially with the number of children involved.
Bluff's foot traffic, everybody heading to the beach.
Right.
I want to read the letters in, I'll start, and this one is, looks like from Robert A. Vera, maybe?
Vera is correct.
Five Sheldon Street, Burlington, Mass. And it's dated May fourth, it's to the zoning board of appeals. And it says, as property owner of seventy-one Bluff Ave, I bought the property at Forty-four Shore Drive, owned by Kevin and Marge Dorni. They recently informed me about their intent to convert their garage into a three-season room with a wraparound deck. I have no objections to this project. Dornis have significantly improved the property in many ways with style and good taste. Value them as neighbors and welcome their plans for this property improvement, sincerely, Robert A. Vera.
This is the Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals, as my understanding, the Dorni family has requested the Zoning Board of Appeals EBA approval for the conversion of the existing garage to a living space and the addition of a front and side deck to their home at Forty-four Shore Drive in Pumpernasset. They have briefed us about their plans, we support their request of the Mashpee's EBA for a variance that will allow them to proceed with the project. Signed by Reed Michael...
Winifred Reed.
Winifred Reed.
Woody, Woody Reed.
There you go.
I got one. Everybody gets one. My wife and I live next door to the Dorni family. Since they purchased the property in two thousand and thirteen, they have made significant improvements to their home, both inside and out. All the improvements that they have made have been very tasteful and keeping with the character of the neighborhood. I have discussed with Kevin their plans to convert the existing garage to a living space and if approved by the Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals to add a small deck to the home. I'm confident that the project will enhance the functionality of the home, and I fully support the request of the Mashpee's EBA for a variance to the setback requirements.
Conservation.
Gene, Steve? All right, it says two Wilsons Grove, I don't know how they can be a next-door neighbor, but...
They actually live right next door to us. There's our house on the corner of Lot and their house on the corner of Wilson Grove.
Okay.
And the Vieras are about as directly behind us.
Okay.
And Woody Reed is directly...
Oh, so they're on, okay, they're on this side over here, I got you.
Okay, Bill, would you read in?
Yeah, I've got Conservation comments. Forty-four Shore Drive property is within the wetland jurisdiction, flood zone, and project will require a permit application to the Conservation Commission, parentheses, RDA.
So, you need to visit Conservation.
And Board of Health. This is dated May twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen. Forty-four Shore Drive, Board of Health comment. The finished converted space of the garage meets all the criteria of the bedroom with the exception of heat. The space shall be restricted to never have heat and not be used as, for sleeping purposes. It will be a violation of Title V if the room is used for sleeping purposes. Dwelling is limited to three bedrooms per two thousand and thirteen septic repair. So, I would suggest that we condition this on that.
Does say three-season porch on the application, it's just, it's noted as a three-season porch, but it has to stay a three-season porch.
Right.
But you also have the conditions...
Conditioned.
By the Board of Health, yeah, so...
It will be part of the record.
Part of the record, the Board of Health comments will be part of the record.
Just so much you know, they weren't trying to put in a bedroom.
Do we have comments from inspections?
Yeah.
I think we do.
You can't fall asleep out there.
On the deck?
No, the deck you can, it's not inside.
Yeah, you got to push him out.
Inspection?
I've got it.
Okay, I have the inspections department, I'll read this. Forty-four Shore Drive, the area is zoned R3 and is within the pumpernasset overlay district and is in the AE flood zone, as you know. The property is also within the pre-contact archaeologically sensitive area listed as moderate. This water is in the AE zone. The applicant is seeking a variance under 1743123 in parentheses to construct a wraparound deck, which will be short six point three feet from the front setback from Bluff Avenue. Did we miss anything?
That's it.
On Health, letter from DPW?
That's it.
You said there's nothing from DPW, correct?
Correct.
No.
I didn't miss something.
All right.
So, Ron, before we do that, anybody have any last questions, comments, concerns?
Nope.
Ron? Would you like to make a motion?
I would love to. I'd like to make a motion to issue a variance to Kevin Dorni of Forty-four Shore Drive. For the front yard setback located from Bluff Ave in the amount of six point three feet. The required distance is twenty-five, and you will have eighteen point seven. We're issuing this variance under section 17431 of the zoning bylaws, allow construction of a deck and a conversion of the attached garage into a three-season porch and property located in R3 zoning district and the pumpernasset overlay district, map one eighteen parcel sixty-four, Mashpee, Mass. Making the motion, I'd like to make reference to, it meets all the conditions of variance under Mass General Law forty-eight, section ten. Reference to a site plan, project proposed addition Forty-four Shore Drive, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record and applicant, Kevin Dorni, sixty-six Ridge Hill Road, Norwell, Mass. Sheet number one of one dated ten six sixteen. Drawing file, street number, scale one inch equals twenty feet. Approved by MC, checked by MC. Designed by TS, prepared by Cape and Isle Engineering. Drawing title, certified plot plan, assessors information, map one eighteen parcel sixty-four, designed, signed by Matthew C. Costa, PLS. Also, I'd like to make reference to two comments, one from Conservation, one from Board of Health, that were read in the record earlier. Also, we have a set of plans. Yeah, we have three letters of, I think, three letters of support.
Three letters of support.
And also like to make a motion, I could also conclude my motion, a set of colored drawings that are headed by proposed renovations to Forty-four Shore Drive, Mashpee, Mass. Concepts for nineteen twenty seventeen. On the board design, six forty-nine Massachusetts Ave, suite eight Cambridge, Mass, oh two one three nine. Phone number six one seven six seven nine nineteen fifty-three. And there are, how many sheets here? One, two, three. There are eight sheets in this set.
Okay, we referenced the plan, all set?
Yep, I already read that into record.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck, nice plan.
Thank you very much, appreciate you helping.
Thank you.
Good night.
I just need to...
I gotta leave.
We're done?
No, we have some...
We have just some business for the...
Learning today.
Mike has something to...
Yes. Do you want these stamped, do you?
How long is this going to take? I got a meeting at Yama's at eight-thirty.
That's Mike.
That's going to be a great...
Go.
If I get any, if there are any papers given out, I'll scan them in and mail them to you.
Nobody stepped down, we're good.
Okay.
Junk, junk. Coming back.
I don't know if he checked this box, did he check, make sure he checked this box, Marianne? Marianne, make sure he checked the box, I'm not sure.
Oh, I didn't check the box.
Are we doing this in executive session or is this to public?
Oh, are you presenting? Tomatoes. Is that what you have there?
We're going to read it in.
This is all familiar.
Okay, Jim, would you read the...
The junk?
First other business.
Other business, training on forty-eight.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Michael Mendoza, I'm the building commissioner for the town of Mashpee. I am working on providing the board training, the town council. And I have the approval from the town manager to do this, aiming for the month of August. In doing this, I've come up with this form which I'm going to hand out to you. It's really simple. You either check off what subjects you're interested in, or you write in other, what you're interested in. Because what I want to do is I want town council to focus on what your concerns are. Because town council can come here, it can go over forty-eight, and as some of us know, there's a lot of pages, there's a lot of different areas of forty-eight. I don't need this back today, tomorrow, but by the end of June would be fine, because then I want to be able to make... then I wanna be able to make copies of it and forward it to town council to at least give him, you know, some time to put together the training program based on what is here. And just to give you an idea, here's one. Variance says, when can I grant a variance? Next one, variance says, how to determine if they meet the requirements for relief? Another example, use, how do I regulate a proposed use? What are my limitations? Special purpose, what can I request and what can I not request as a condition to grant? The other one I had was, what constitutes a change? How much of a change to the look of a building that has been approved at an early hearing would need to come back before the board? But then, like I said, if there's something else you're interested in knowing, write it down. I don't need your name, I just need to give direction to town council, so that's how we can put it together. I don't want his time wasted, nor do I want your time wasted. To go over stuff that's not really what you feel you need to know, I want to know is, what do you need more information on? So I'm gonna hand this out to you all.
Good.
And that's really about it, just get it to me at the end of June, and then I'll just take it from there. And we'll set up a meeting, and then we'll just go through that, that's all there is to it. Any questions?
Yeah, can we scan it in and email it to you?
And that's fine. I'll take it any way you wanna get it to me. All I wanna do is be able to put it all together and give direction, because there's a lot in 48. I mean, we could be talking about farming, we could be talking about solar farms, we can talk about solar, we could be talking about adult entertainment, we could be talking. I want him to focus, and I want him to focus on what you need. That's it.
Perfect.
How's that sound?
Let me suggest one thing. Just like when you're in high school and college, if they said a paper had to be done by the end of the semester, you usually waited until what? The night before the end of the semester?
Early morning.
Yeah.
I'm gonna start off right now, I need to get right back to.
Make us, let me make a suggestion that we, well, it's fresh in your mind. Try and put some thought into it, maybe this week, and get it back by the end of the week.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
And think about some of the.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Think about some of the issues we've had.
Questions on?
Yeah. One of them, Ron brought up.
Grandfathering.
Yeah.
Subdivisions, and all that's, I mean, grandfathering was a big one.
Lots, that what's buildable, what isn't buildable. We've had them come through there where we said, you can't build on it, and you can build on it, look at the same thing to me.
By the way, it could be just more than one, if you wanna check it all and still fill it, it's whatever you need. I'm here trying to help you. I need to know how to advise town council on what the issues are. So if you've got 10 of them, put 10 down. Don't just do, if it's one, it's one. Mike, do you, do you see us ever being able, or do you see us now being able to, if we have a question about, let's say, not just zoning, but let's just say, when did a specific zoning provision, you know, become a law in this town? So that if a law came in front of us, right, and it has setbacks from a road, but the law's been in existence for so many years, it seems as though there's some things that we need to get from maybe the planning board director, the planning director, whomever, or there's some research that could be, need to be done, so we can better understand when some things became law and when they didn't become law. Well, sometimes in the zoning bylaws.
It'll tell you.
Sometimes. It goes way back. But on stuff like that, that's gonna take research, and. So can we use, in your opinion, the town planner to ask him questions about that? You have the request, you have the ability to request information. And my understanding, and the secretary can correct me if I'm wrong, but all the department heads, more or less, they get these notices. So they know. But if there's some more information you need to know, it's no different, like, we'll say with Conservation, you know, you've had some cases where, well, Conservation really hasn't made a decision on this, so we're going to continue this until we get a report from Conservation. I guess globally, I'm trying to understand what our resources are.
I've never done my homework in my life.
What, what can we do to ask somebody that has all these years of knowledge, like a planning director of this town, you know, when this happened, or when, you know, those types of things? Do we have those? Yes, you do. Okay. All you have to do is ask the question. It's no different than asking the question, we'll say, of the harbor master, well, I got a dock coming out here, what's really, you get nervous on, you know, is it 100 foot, 200 feet? You know what I'm saying? When it's not getting a dock that long, that we should be going, ah, you know?
Absolutely. We didn't have comments from the harbor master or shellfish warden this morning on Pompanesett Island Road for that dock. And I called Mary Ann and said.
That's part of, that's part of the zoning.
And she had sent it out and never heard, and I asked her to send it again, and we were lucky enough to get the comments. But sometimes you gotta ask three times.
But doesn't, does the zoning bylaw, I think it states, though, if my recollection is correct, that if he's asked or notified, he has so much time, and if he doesn't, it's approved, or something like that, isn't that something in there? Who's he? The harbor master. I think there's something you ask, and if you don't get the answer, maybe there's something else. They, they have the opportunity to respond, and if they don't. But if they don't respond.
You're thinking of something.
Right.
No, we have always taken the position, if we do not hear from DPW on a petition.
They have no problem.
They don't have a problem, because they're all notified that we have these hearings, and this is what's been filed, please give us your comments, and we hope that they give us either a positive or a negative comment, like, I have no problem. If they don't, we assume they have no problem. That's the way we've operated. Correct me if I'm wrong, John, since we've been here.
I agree. One of the things you're thinking about, I believe, is they, the town has 21 days to...
It's a constructive grant.
Yeah, but there's something else, actually, in a line item in our zoning that says, if somebody doesn't give you a comment within so, I believe, but that's okay, I'm. But it may be about on another different subject. It has nothing to do with this, because what we're talking here is 48. And the thing is, is you're looking to see comments, but there's nothing, when you go here and you start looking up the section on the zoning, you know, the Board of Appeals and their authority.
When somebody makes a request to see us, and, you know, we postpone and postpone, there's a drop dead date.
Yeah, no, I got you there.
If you don't get that done.
It's a constructive approval.
Then it gets approved.
That's right.
Because we took too long. We held up the customer. So that might be what you're thinking of.
Well, there's certainly a lot of things.
I finish first.
All right.
You just jacked everything off.
It's always one of you in the class.
Yeah, I was never that guy.
Teacher's pet, there you go. I'm looking at the bylaws right now, there is nothing here that talks about. You're looking at the dock specifically? Oh, for the Zoning Board of Appeals, under the bylaws. There's nothing really here to say, all they talk about is establishment, appointment terms, organization, associate members.
Okay.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about something else.
Oh, okay.
He was, I referred to the question of.
I was talking about dock.
So what does it say about the harbor master, if I can interject?
Okay. All other docks will be permitted as of right. When a special perm is required, the applicant shall, at the time of filing a plan with the Board of Appeals, submit copies of said plan to the Conservation, Shellfish and Waterway Commission. Prior to the granting of any such special perm of the Board of Appeals, so consider comments and recommendations from those departments. Failure by any of the aforementioned comments may be interpreted as approval of the proposal.
Okay. So if he doesn't issue, it's approved. So you've been doing right. Yeah. So that's what I'm saying, too. So if he, if he doesn't do his thing, and he doesn't say anything, done. You guys have been doing exactly right.
That's right.
On the docks. That's about it. That's about it. I, I was talking, I was looking at it.
When anything.
See, I, I was looking at it in general, because like the same thing, like you were talking about the town plan, whether or not you apply it or not. And it says, well, that doesn't address that. So that's why I went straight to the zoning, you know, what the Board of Appeals, what's the deal? And it's silent. But the policy always is, well, if I don't hear from you, you had to buy it the apple, you decided not to take it. How do you see the format, Mike, with the town council? Is he gonna come here on a given night, and we come in and he sits? Yes, it's gonna be a given night, it's gonna have to, because of fact, we're gonna have a quorum, it's gonna be posted, it's gonna be, obviously, it's a non-meeting night, and, and that's really about it. The question comes down to is trying to schedule the time.
I don't think it can be executive session, can it?
Is it a public hearing, or?
No, it's not a public hearing, it's just a training. Well, that could be one of our questions, what allows us to go into executive session? Right? Well, executive session is outlined under.
Talking about lawsuits.
Yes.
Is one of them.
Yeah, I know that, but there's, there's several of them, and I don't think that would be one of them, so probably we're never.
I guess, I guess the question is, can, can we all meet as a group without?
As long as it gets posted.
I'm sorry, what?
We're gonna post it.
That's what I mean.
Right, we're gonna have to, yes.
It doesn't have to be advertised as posted.
Just posted.
Posted, that we're being trained, or we're meeting.
No, that the CBA is meeting.
Public could come to the meeting if they wanted to.
Right, if they wanna learn.
Mike, is that going to be on television? Number one, number two?
No, it's not gonna be on television.
Oh, 'cause I could then tape it and, you know, give people a disc.
I think he's having fun with it.
I know he is.
I'm having what?
Having fun with me, yeah.
No, I'm serious.
My allergies may be bothering me, but no. No, but the bottom line, it's a training, because of the fact we have a, we're gonna have a quorum, we have to have it as a posted meeting. It's just like, you know, we have a bunch of department heads sit down in a meeting, it's gotta be posted, but it's not filmed, no, there's no need for it, but this is gonna be a training exercise.
The reason I ask it would be taped, if there's someone who couldn't make it, then they could get a disc, but that's okay.
Now, now, we'd have to talk with the town, 'cause obviously, I think you're gonna have to end up, have to be paying for it.
Pay for it.
Yeah.
No.
What do you mean, no? Answer your question, you know?
Jim, you pay.
No, the town, the town would have to pay the people to film it, and I don't think they wanna do that if it's just a training.
But this is on television, here.
Yeah, but we're doing a training.
But we still need the tape.
We can be more informed.
There's a fee every time she comes.
For the future.
Right, it's just a training. There's no need to video it.
We've had things that are questionable, and we wanna get straight answers, and.
That's all.
Because we can't do it at the meeting.
Right.
Questionable.
And the only other option I really have for you all is showing up at one of the building officials' trainings, where we have, you know, attorneys coming in on various subjects, but that's during the day. So people like Scott, who are working for him to get away from the job site, to go, to show up from.
Have to give up golf.
Golf, there we go.
We've got a priority straight now.
I think we leave that to you.
But every town is different. I mean, I mean, the answer to our questions might not be the same, 'cause every town might be different, the way that their bylaws are written. So I could go to a building commissioner's meeting, but.
No, 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 but, but no, what the meeting is, is a lot of times we have trainings by attorneys, for instance, and I'm not dropping names, like Bobowski, or, or, or Jay Lanza, you know, and they talk about different parts of zoning, 'cause that's what the strong point is. And so what happens is, we learn about the latest zoning cases, things from grandfathering signs, et cetera, et cetera, we, they go through the gambit. So we spend all day, and it happens. I mean, for instance, like, I just finished a two-day training last week, and we had two attorneys, one each day, and did a 90, 90-minute presentation throughout the day, and it was like, no, this is all zoning, that's what it was, so.
It's informative, I mean, for you guys, with everything you deal with.
Right.
But like I said, for us.
But, but this is why, this is why I wanted to be specific, you, you had your specific questions, that during the training, whether it's you, whether it's Brad, whether it's say, yeah, but, when we had this case, or we get a case like this, how do I look at it in, in the shape of this question?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? And that's what it is, it's to assist you. Because the big thing, you gotta understand, that I see clearly, this is kinda more like my world and yours, you guys are in it, but the thing is, you volunteer, you take like Brad, you take like Jim, they, they just came on board, really? Where's your legal background? What did you know about 48 until the first time you sat there and you heard the story?
Exactly.
So you're, you're, you're making decisions on a subject that you have to really be